Thank you for attending the Pasco School Board's study session this afternoon. As always, our study sessions are open public meetings and are recorded for broadcast on Charter Cable TV Channel 191 and also for YouTube if you go onto YouTube and search Pasco Schools. We're glad to have Mr. Howard Roberts here this afternoon to brief us on the proposed 2017-2018 budget.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board President Lairman, Deputy Superintendent, Superintendent Wendy, I have old notes here, I'm sorry, and members of the Board. So my goal here today is, as usual, this time you to provide you with an overview of a project that has involved all of us on the leadership team in fiscal since at least last December at some point or another. That is the proposed budget for 2017-18. That is the budget that starts September 1st of this year and will finish on August 31st of 2018. I will, as usual, be focusing on the general fund because this year, in this year's budget, nine out of every $10 is going to be expended through the general fund. But I will cover the other funds and highlight any significant changes along the way. I would invite your questions as we go along, and if I can't answer them, I brought reinforcements today. Jody Hockaday, our finance manager, is here to help out, to help and assist me. So, by way of background, rules of a budget, there are more than one. First of all, legal compliance. There are a number of legal requirements for governmental entities, and it's a major emphasis in governmental budgeting, this particular one, because it sets the spending limits for the district and it demonstrates available resources to be used to pay for that spending. The budget adoption process as a whole is a very public process and has very specific rules on making the budget available to the public and advertising in advance for people to speak for or against the budget. Internal control. The budget is not a document for this shelf. It needs to be in place to monitor the years it goes along, how the actual results are stacking up against the budget. It's an early warning system in that sense. It's part of the process to protect public assets. And then finally, as a financial plan, you've been hearing more about this lately, since resources are scarce, the budget is a plan prioritizing those resources. Two, and in our case outrageous outcomes. We've talked some about the government finance officers or GFOA's framework on best practices in school budgeting, and the leadership team has really made an effort to start aligning their financial planning around those outrageous outcomes, and we've developed a number of different tools to help facilitate that alignment. Unfortunately, because of the late arrival of this year's budget, we were very compressed in some of the, so it just didn't allow us to do all the work we'd like to have done. And you're not going to see these connections as clearly in this budget as I hope you will in future years to those outrageous outcomes. However, they are there and we're well on our way to implementing more of that process. Just a brief calendar of the events of this year. A lot of time was spent early on, as usual, the most complex and most detailed part of creating the budget for the school district is the personnel. And we were in a place where we were able to finish the position budgeting this year thanks to cooperative effort between principals and booth administrators and employee and fiscal services. We got that ahead, done a little bit ahead of time. And then, really, we kind of went into a holding pattern because we had developed most of the cost, but in the end, 80% of our revenue comes from the state, so we were waiting until June 30th when things actually got done, as you can see there. And then it actually took OSPI a little bit, give them a few weeks to put together the projections and the tools that help us. So, at any rate, we had after July 18th basically to start putting this together and feel pretty good about the numbers in it. But we're still on schedule, as you can see with today's meeting and then a public hearing for adoption scheduled for August 22nd. Again, setting the context, per state law, school districts have five major funds. Each fund operates as a separate, has its own budget, accounting, and it's like its own entity, kind of almost like a company. Each fund has certain resources that is responsible, and each fund is restricted in some way to the type of expenditures it can make. And you can see in the list here what each fund is restricted to. The general fund is a little bit, a little less restrictive in that it pays for normal and recurring operations of the school district. Capital projects is not to be used for operations, it's just the inverse, it's to be used to pay for long-lived capital improvements. Debt service repays bond and principal interest on that comes, as it comes due. The ASP is for extracurricular activities where the students raise the monies, control the expenditures with some help from adult advisors. And then finally, the transportation vehicle fund is just what it sounds like, it's for buses and other transportation equipment. Again, just by way of background to reacquaint you with those. Here's the budget on one page, and you can see with all five of the funds across the top. If you were to start in the first column, the general fund at the top, we'll just go through this one real quickly. We are projecting a $25 million starting point, that's the beginning fund balance. Looking at revenues, about 11% higher than they were this last year at $227 million, and we've got expenditures at $229 million, that's $2 million more, and I'll talk about that a little bit more, for a total estimated ending fund balance of $23 million. And that, it works the same way, of course, for all the rest of the funds, and I'll talk a little bit more about those as we get into those. But I did want to just mention, for legal compliance purposes, as we mentioned one of the goals, that yellow highlighted line is the main driver for our budget, that is the spending limit, as proposed in this budget for each of the funds. And it is a single, single line that you will see on the resolution for adoption of the fund or the budget on August 22nd. The Board of Directors here in Pasco has established a long-running record of fiscal responsibility, and that's been borne out by successful financial and compliance audits and the achievement of the district's highest bond rating ever. The proposed budget wants to, or continues adherence to these basic principles, and these are, I've listed them here. First is conservative revenue forecasting. I would say conservative but realistic, on both the revenue and expenditure side. We're realistic, but you know, but we want to fall on the cautious side so we don't overestimate our revenue and have to make knee-jerk decisions based on that. Second one, ongoing expenditures should be funded by ongoing revenue. In other words, don't borrow from the future to make ends meet today. And that's something that we've really strived for a number of years at the district. It isn't easy either. And then fund balance management, that's a way to plan for costs that are expected to occur after the end of this fiscal year, things we know that are down the road. So as I mentioned, here's the revenue side, the picture. General fund revenues expected are up to about $24 million. It's actually about 12% more than 16, 17. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, and it is, but I will tell you here that next year's budget will be an even higher increase if the, if the current state budget stands, you will see even more of an increase in this, in the apportionment side. So, there's kind of one story in two parts here for the increased funding from the state. Part one is that most of the increase in the apportionment dollars is for salaries and benefits. And there's only a slight increase for non-salary items or what we call MSOC, material supply and operating costs. The state budget includes additional funding to provide for a 2.3% cost of living increase. And if you remember, this increased state funding pays for that COLA only to the extent that that position is funded by the state government. We have other positions that aren't funded by the state or parts of positions that aren't, and of course, we've got to use other revenue sources, usually levy and levy equalization to take care of those. The other thing that you'll see here is that retirement rate increase, this is substantial, it's 14% again on the employer side. That is coupled with, I think a couple of years ago, you may remember, there was like a 20% increase. We're seeing those pension costs continue to grow at the state level. Also here, we have the class size enrichment, I'm going to skip down to that. If you recall, there was enhanced dollars for school districts who made progress towards a target size that the state set in terms of a ratio to students to teachers. And we would receive a portion of that revenue kind of proportionate based on how close we got to that, to that, that ratio. For one year only, which causes problems sometimes, I guess we'll take it for 17, 18, the state has said, you don't have to prove that you're at 17 to 1, which is their approved ratio right now, and we will still give you full enhancement funding. Now, that's for one year, and that does cause, as I said, some concern for the out-years. Those dollars are in there. We've got a portion of the levy that we had, will increase things in levy equalization. But then part two of the state funding story, which is down there, you can see the last four items or so. Our large funding increases, career and technical education, and then certain grant, state grant programs. And again, I use the word targeted, because for example, learning assistance program, it's for students, it's defined as for students who are deficient in basic skills. These additional dollars are directed at specific high-poverty schools, they have to be used in those schools, the way the formula works out. Transitional bilingual, again, purpose there is for the, to assist in the education of students whose primary language is not English. The increased funding for this came in only for grade seven through 12. There is no increased funding for K through six. So again, they're really steering the money in certain directions. But that's a look at where the money's from, and you can see the bigger pieces, kind of the two main pieces that are there, but it's primarily from the state.
What percent of, I think you said it was in the 13.6, is it the K3 class size funding provided with no reduction? Is that the money you said that we get for this one year?
Yes, it's 17 now, 17 students per teacher.
And what, how much of the 13.6 million is that?
It's probably, we're going to say right around $3 million.
And what's the intent, like, when they give it to us, what, they're giving it to the districts that have smaller class size, what, you can use it on anything? Are they saying that you should use it for something?
No, it's an allocation right now, so no, they haven't said that you need to use it for specific purposes.
So the, the rest of those up there kind of have, they're kind of earmarked? I mean, it goes into the general fund, but this is more like they're not telling you what to spend it on, or?
No, there's no guide.
Just extra money, okay.
Yeah.
Got a question on that same one?
Sure.
Maybe you can answer it, maybe not. So is that, is that all or nothing, or is it a sliding scale?
It's all or nothing for this one year, and it's our understanding, I'm going to speak for Jody here too, that next year it will probably go back to a sliding scale again, where you'll get points if you get so close to it, but.
Right. So they, they reward you the closer you get?
Exactly, that's, that's right. And that's the way it's functioned this last year, and yeah.
So you can spend that on anything? Like, a board could tran, I'm not saying we should do this, but you could transfer it into a capital fund or something like that if you wanted to?
It's, it's general fund dollars, so it kind of loses its color, you know, it's all part of that mixture, so. So here, these should be familiar, but we've got a, a composition of this year's budget on the right, or excuse me, on the left, versus the, the prior year's budget. I do this just to show you the makeup of the budget, where we're getting the dollars from, one year to another, and there's no surprise in this one that the state grants category is the major increase. We're getting a higher percentage of our funding, our funding from state grants. Apportionment also slightly up. And what that does, even though we've had a pretty consistent amount of local revenue, that continues to, that slice of the pie continues to decrease as we go along. So, those of you who've heard this a few times will know that generally when we get revenue, the expenditures usually follow where that's coming, and this is, it follows the money trail, and this is exactly what's happened. You can see out of the, it's almost $17 million out of that increase that will be paid out in one form or another for salaries and benefits. Now, that number does include, we've got eight new teaching positions in here, and it does include the salary progression or the steps for those employees who are eligible for that. As we look down the list as well, you can see, starting again, CTE, 1.2 million, learning assistance has got 2.7 million, bilingual 1.2, and even highly capable, that sounds like a small amount, that 200,000, but percentage-wise, that's a pretty significant increase in the dollars for that particular program. And then down next, we have learning devices, we've, that's an investment that we've got going. This amount, new Mr. Garrett gets us to a stable place where we should just be on a four-year replacement cycle, and I will just share the, I think the good news on that is he's found a way to keep the cost down by basically moving the storage off of the devices and into the cloud. We can do a lot better on the price per unit for those, for those type of devices. So I think you'll see that that'll, that, that amount should reduce from the kind of big investments we've had to make in the last few years. Also, we have next year, the New Horizons lease, that's rounded up, it's actually 350,000 for our first year for their new home, and we do have a pretty significant increase in our liability insurance.
If, if all employee, or if all employees get a 2.3% cost of living increase, and whatever the retirement rate increase is, and we hired eight new teachers at the average mid-rate, and did healthcare, everything else, how much extra money is there out of the 17 million? Does the 17 million cover all that?
Yeah, that, that's all in there.
Is there extra and beyond left there?
That's, that's all in there. That's in that 17 million.
It's exactly 16.9?
Right.
Okay.
Which is over 3 million short of the revenue. The offsetting revenue.
Right. And, and remember, the reason for that is, is because the state doesn't pick up 100% of those costs, so, yeah, that's the major reason.
So it's, so it's about 20 million? Is that, is that what you're saying?
No, the, the revenue that matches this was 13 point something.
Right.
I don't have the slide here.
So this is already expending over the, the state revenue?
Yes, yes.
So I'm curious, what's the retirement rate increase? What is, what, can you explain that?
Okay, well, all employees in the district are covered by one of three retirement plans. The public employees retirement plan, this, I can't remember what SERS stands for now, but, and then we have the teachers retirement plan. Each of those has, well, there's two different rates. The teachers have one rate, the rest of the employees have a second rate, and they're, each rate is further subdivided to a point that the employee pays a portion and the employer pays a portion. And I know there's more that the employees are paying, I honestly didn't look at that as closely, I probably will notice it when I get paid, but I'm more interested in what the employer has to pay right now, and, and that's where I did the 14%. I, I can tell you that it's up to about 15 cents per dollar on a teacher's wage now that it's going to go to retirement.
So what I'm trying to figure out, so this is, this is going towards their pension, I mean, their, their retirement plan doesn't change, it's just costing more to fund that plan now, so now teachers are having to pay more, and the more teachers retire and the fewer teachers come in, I mean, assuming that, if that happens, it could go up even more.
Yes.
Just to fund those, that pension already.
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I wanted to, it's not like you're getting more benefit for it, you're just having to pay more for, and hopefully there's somebody there to pay it when you go to draw your.
So I, just to make sure I understand, Howard, I didn't fully appreciate this, you know, when we say the education's not fully funded, I, I know that we as a, as a board and as a district and as a community give additional teacher raises or extended days, whatever you want to call it, sometimes during bargaining, and that's, that's paid for by the local people. But does the state expect, like here, if it's 17 million that they give us, or that the expenditure is and the revenues 14 or 13, whatever it was on the other thing, are they expecting that difference to come through local levies at this point?
Yeah, by default, that's how it's evolved over time. Yeah, I mean, it just didn't happen, it's just been moving that.
So it's not just the, the raises and the extended days that a school board gives in a, in a bargain that's not fully funded, we're actually not even funded here to meet, meet the requirements?
I will, just to give you an example, administrators are funded at $60,000 by the state, just, just to give you an example, so. All right. Let me move on. Okay, so here's a reminder that, that budget principle, and actually, it's in the GFOA itself, it's always been recognized, one of their best practices, is ongoing revenue should cover ongoing expenditures. And you can see here for the 17, 18 budget, at the two, if you break it into ongoing pieces, the budget is balanced on an ongoing basis, and I'm glad to be able to say this because this is the first time in a long time we've been able to say that with the downturn in the economy and the pullback in the funding, we were able to fit it. Now, the other piece though, we have other types of expenditures which we've differentiated and called them what we call one-time expenditures. These are usually infrequent in nature and usually for major improvements, things like parking lots or HVACs or, or equipment, that type of thing. So the, kind of the corollary to one-time should match one-time is, or ongoing should match ongoing is one-time should match one-time. Well, where do you get one-time dollars in a school district? It really is in your fund balance, which is like your accumulated savings account over the years. So just like when you have your own personal finances, when you have a larger infrequent purchase, like you're going to redo a kitchen or buy a car or something, you try to, try to save towards that goal and then you make that, you make that purchase. In our district, some years we end up adding to fund balance generally because we're pretty conservative on the projections. The proposed 17, 18 budget does include, you see the line there, one-time expenditures, those are priority investments in the amount of $2 million. That's the difference, that's why when we start the beginning fund balance, we've got 25. We balanced on the operating side, we're, we are making planned investments of the fund balance of $2 million, and that leaves us with $23 million. And I'll show you the breakdown of that when we get a chance to go there. So again, a graph, this time for the expenditure side, you can see how the program, if you break expenditures down by program, that's a plan of activities designed to accomplish a certain set of objectives. Basic and special education, the two education numbers there, total together are, are up about $13 million. And again, that's largely due to that cost of living increase and the, and the retirement. Then you see the, the CTE and state programs, their slice of the pie is also up, and we talked about, there's a direct infusion there. They also have people who are funded by the state who are going to benefit from the cost of living as well. The other items, as you go down further with district support and all, you're, smaller growth there, you're just not going to see as much there, and part of the reason for that is those items don't tend to be quite as people-heavy. We have more investments in, in things as opposed to people when you get into some of those categories, but you, they still would all benefit from the cost of living adjustment as well. Another look at things, this is by activity, this is a basic type of program regardless of the, our, basic type of service regardless of the program. It's not a lot to say here, it stayed almost the same. I will say that, again, teaching and teaching support, if you were to add those two pieces together, is about 73%. The last data that I have from the state of Washington for districts our size, it averages about 71%, so we have a pretty good size investment into teaching and, and teaching support. Building administration and central services are nearly the same as they were last year, actually a little bit smaller as a portion of the budget, and compared to where districts our size sit, they're right at about 6%, so we're right there too, actually a little bit less. And then finally, you can look at object, expenditures by object, and the main thing I wanted to show here is the objects shaded green, those are the salaries and benefits, and as I mentioned, they're by far the largest portion of the, the budget. It's actually about 129 million of the 100, of the 2, 189 million of the 229 million dollars, so all but about $40 million is, is going to be spent in those three categories. We're, we're a people-heavy, you know, business on that side. This I have to do, I'm not real excited about this, but last year, if you recall, the state of Washington said, we want to make sure that you're spending your MSOC, that's material supplies and operating costs, again, basically everything that is in salary, we want to make sure that the apportionment we're given to you, we're giving to you, you're spending that on MSOCs, you're not giving it to somebody in salaries. So they have us do this little analysis every year, and you can see in the box down below that the, the apportionment dollars are actually lagging, we spent on MSOCs by quite a bit in that particular area, for general education. So at the end of the year, as I mentioned, we were estimating about $23 million. And what we can do, and what we talked about doing is to, is to manage that ending fund balance in such a way as to give people a clue as to what's happening in the district and, and kind of help smooth the road ahead. So first of all, we segregate the unavailable dollars, resources. In this case, we have 5% of the revenue, which is 11, about 11.4 million dollars, that leaves us with about 10.5, and you can see the recommended assignments for each of those dollars. What we really want to do with these, of course, is to focus our operations on our priorities, the outrageous outcomes. And you can see that reflected in the first three, which are all replacement of the bigger ticket items. And then the, then the fourth one, you haven't seen before, but as you, that's one of those outrageous outcomes is in regards to participation in extracurricular activities, it is, it is wise for us to start putting some dollars aside for that. Those are dol, those are things that, you know, they just get worn out, whether, whether they're instruments for loan, whether it's other pieces, and it's, it would probably be a good idea to start putting some dollars towards, and again, in recognition of that outrageous outcome. We have the student housing there, that could be used to relocate portables if you'd like, or we can use that for other dollars. And then future legislative item, I mentioned the $3 million, we have one year and then it probably goes away, or at least a big chunk of it is, for right now, we're putting that as a placeholder to kind of remember that that's out there. So with that, that, that's the components that we're recommending for the fund balance, if you will, the savings account that we estimate will be there at the end of the year. Any questions? That's the general fund, I'm ready to move on to the other funds if, if I saw.
Just a higher, higher level question here. So there is part of the 2018's in here and part of 2017 calendar, calendar years.
Right.
So when, when the state tax for the levy goes up at the beginning of 2018 in January, 80 cents or whatever, are those revenues that we're, we're talking about, were there two different calculations used for the two different parts of the year? So for 2017 portion of what you're showing us?
Oh.
Was a state contribution less than the second part, which is 2018? Or what, what calculation was used here to look at it, what kind of revenues are coming in?
So the state portion of it, we don't obviously have much control of it, and it goes to feed this new funding formula, including the dollars that we're getting this year and the LAP and all these other items. So it's indirect, it's, it's in here, and it's for the full year. They have other funding sources to finish up this year, but as far as a bump with the 82 cents in 18, I don't, I don't see a, a difference there. I think it's all going, does that answer your question Scott?
So we're not getting more, at the beginning of 18, we're not getting more money when they start collecting 80 extra cents per thousand from everyone's property tax, we're not going to see that till 19, or when would?
You know, it's, it's hard to say, it's how they roll that into their funding, but yeah, it's, no, we won't see a direct benefit from that 82 cents that I can see in this next year's budget.
I think the question is this, how do you, how did you figure out the funding increase for this year? Did you just say 2%? I mean, you can go back to that slide if it's helpful, but.
No, no, that's why we wait for OSPI to come up with some, with some estimates.
So are those numbers based on what OSPI is projected and said?
Right.
And they, so I'm curious here, that the, the allocation for school- And they, so I'm curious here, that the, the allocation for schools, is that based, that's based on the number of students?
Right.
I mean, for the most part?
For the most part, right.
And is that, is that the September, is it September, October? Is it the, is it one-time, number of students this month, this is how much you get for the whole year, or do they take it?
You get funded for September through December based on your estimate in your budget.
Okay.
And then starting in January, it's a rolling average.
Okay.
September through January, then the September through February. So they adjust it every single solitary month for your current average.
I see. And, and this year will be pretty much the same as last year, I believe. Is that right, the way they fund it? I mean, at some point, there's going to be an increase in, in what the state provides and a decrease in our local levy. Is that, is that 18, 19 school year, is that when that happens?
They didn't make any changes in the, what we call the F203, it's their funding, you go in and you put in the enrollment and it adjusts the dollars.
Right, right.
Oh, the only changes they made were for the base for salaries and those kinds of things.
Sure.
They didn't make any adjustments for the new funding cycle.
Oh.
I do not believe that that's going to happen until I do the budget next year.
So they're going to collect, starting in January of 18, and bank it?
They, they already talk, they're going to have to totally rewrite.
Okay.
Redo that.
Yeah.
They're not even, at this point, OSPI isn't even sure.
Sure.
So that's almost.
Right. Okay. So this year, it'll be pretty much similar, at least we believe, to what it was last year and has been. But at some point, at some point, there's going to be a pretty significant change, we just, yeah, and we've got a, okay, well, it'll be interesting, so, thank you.
Are, is that close enough, Scott, or you?
Yeah, I get it now, thanks for the conversation. So I think what I heard you say is the state's going to start collecting 80 cents per thousand extra in January of 18, but we won't see it until 18, 19 budget.
Our next fiscal year.
Yeah.
That's my guess on this.
Sure, but it's fine.
So, moving on to the capital projects fund, one thing I want to make really clear right up front, this budget does not include a successful passage of the 2017 bond, because when that does pass, as we've done in the past, we will come here and ask for a budget amendment to include the amount of revenue from the bond and all the expenditures that were proposed to use. That's why it's a smaller number, and I want, I just wanted you to be aware of that. What you really see here is it starts at 14 million, it ends at about 8 million. This is typical for the end of a bond project cycle. We're wrapping up the 2013 bonds, there aren't a lot of them there. You can see state construction assistance is down to about $514,000. It's primarily for the Pasco High project.
Mr. Roberts, can you make a comment on the impact fees? I know that we can kind of bank or save up those for up to seven years or something like that. Do you, you may not know off the top of your head, what our kind of balance of that is right now, of impact fee collection and, because I know we haven't been spending all of that. Sorry, that's fine.
I can sure get that.
You can look at that, but I.
It's just over 4 million.
Okay. Okay, so, that's fine, I won't.
I'll just trust her memory.
Or that we've collected total since we've initiated this?
No, we've collected well over 5 million since we.
Yeah, that's fine. That, I'd be interested to know that, because that's, you know, when we talk about that and a lot of these increases, I think some people want to know, like, are we able to save up some of this money and, and put that towards an actual facility, whereas in the past, we've used, usually used that for portables, and we're trying to transition that a little bit away from that. So I'm really curious to know what our collection has been since that started, what it's been used for, and then how much we have remaining, and maybe what an estimate is based on what's been collected year to year over the last couple of years, and what our projection is for the next few years.
Impact fees have bought land in the district, correct? And portables and redones, didn't they redo the septics and water stuff out at Markham?
Well, we first used them to buy down the debt principal.
First used them to buy down the debt, yeah.
That was a primary reason we were able to, and we intend to use them on this bond, if you recall, too. We've got, I think, $3 million pegged to buy down the debt, so we don't have to issue as much to the taxpayers as far as that goes.
But, but it was earmarked toward, I believe, the land purchasing, wasn't it, or was it?
I don't know if it was any particular process, but yes, it would make more sense to go towards something that state is going to, not going to provide any state assistance for, so, yeah.
So I've got one other question, this state construction, construction assistance, is that tied up in the current capital budget?
Yes.
So we do, we do have money that's.
Yes, I don't know how much we have out right now, but it's enough that, yes, we would like to see that.
We just, they did just pay us, we did, I just did a big claim for 600 some thousand. We did get that money last week. So it's just the balance remaining of the project, so.
So it's not millions?
No. This would be the max that we would have tied up.
All right, thank you.
So here are the.
So Howard, just to answer, I'd been asking some of the same questions, Aaron, and I asked Michelle and some district staff to look into saving up our impact fees. You know, we're getting, whatever you just said, a couple million dollars a year at this time for impact fees. Can we save them up and either save long enough to build a school or save long enough to then supplement it with additional money? And the answer on the additional money, like, I said, well, why don't we save up until we can state-match it? And Michelle was saying, well, at this point, it'd take a while to do that, so if we had any non-voted debt, they recommended, and she said it was actually illegal to do that, but I think we could save up our money for however many years it took, right? And then use that if we had state-match to build a school at that point. If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, or we can use it towards something, like, you know, we're talking about, you know, using it to help with the bond, we're trying to decrease the effect on our taxpayers, but just to show, I think it'd be good information even to share with the community as part of our facilities planning, that this is, this is, let's account for this and just really be a transparent, this is what's been collected, because, you know, if we don't even know that ourselves, certainly no one in the community knows that, this is what we're collecting from all this house building that's occurring in Pasco. This is, how much has been collected, what it's been spent on, what it's being allocated for right now, and what our anticipated collection from future growth of all those developments in Pasco, so that that's a key component, people want to know that.
And that will be really helpful when we have to renew these impact fees coming up shortly.
I will tell you that we do have to report as part of our agreement with the city of Pasco, for them to collect it every year, I have to report on a calendar basis, what did we use the dollars for, how much should we collect, and actually where we collected them from. In the terrible case in which you'd have to refund, you need to know where the people are, the, so, yeah, it's, it's very detailed.
So that is there.
Very specific.
Yeah, it's, that's hippie dollars.
So here, here are the projects, I mentioned there was about $8.6 million, and you can see, a lot of these are related to Pasco High, the science classroom, that's the major one you saw the reimbursement for. We also have, if you look down, further down the list, the roof and the office, I don't know if you knew about the Bell's clock, and Intercom trying to integrate those, so they're all at the same time and everything goes off well. And also related to that as well is the Court Street sidewalks, that improvement that the city has required us to do there. So these are smaller projects in terms of dollar amount than what we've done in the past, but they are very important. If I were you, I'd want to know what the North Pond construction is, because I had to ask again, because I'd forgotten. If you recall, we bought 76 acres for possibly a new high school site well over a year ago. And part of that deal, there is an irrigation pond on it, and to perfect it, to, to take our part of the sales and purchase agreement, we are required to do something with that, that pond out there. And if we go any deeper than that, I'll have to turn it to Randy, but I, that's, that's one piece that's out there. And then we do, the portables, I would just mention, those are the ones that we've already, the board has already approved to move this next year for the 17, 18 school year. They need to be in place for 17, 18. We haven't got a lot of billing for those yet, we need to have some capacity in the budget. And the other thing I would mention, the land purchase, if you notice, there's 1.1 million there, there's the same exact thing on the other side on the revenue side, 1.1 million. Again, I want to leave some capacity, we have talked about land sales and we're, I want to leave some dollars there to buy some, or if we sell one of ours, to have the receipts come in as well.
Mr. Roberts, what'd you say about the portables? I was listening, you said, we haven't done what?
Oh, we haven't, a lot of the billing hasn't happened yet. These are the ones that were already approved by the board, but most of the bills are going to be paid after the end of this fiscal year.
Oh, billing, billing, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Have those all been moved already?
I don't know that.
They will be moved before the start of school year?
So my understanding, Randy, correct me if I'm wrong with a head nod, the elementary portables will be completed and ready for student occupancy before the first day of school. We may need to do some retrofitting of the elementary portable, portables with restrooms once the school year starts. Then the priority is Chihuahua High School's portable, and I believe that the occupancy, occupancy date that we are shooting for is November 1st.
I don't want to go off topic too much, so I'll ask you later, I'm curious what the, what the challenges or holdups were on that, but we can talk about it later. Thank you.
Moving on to the debt service fund, as I mentioned before, the source of revenue is really property taxes here from approved bond measures that have passed in the past. And property tax collections are, from those flow into the county, and the county uses that money to pay for the debt service on the corresponding debt as it becomes due. As you can see here, the principal and interest is about 12.6 million. We have about that much flowing in, and that leaves us with about $5 million, which puts us right in the cycle to make our next payment, which will be due in December. We pay twice a year, June and December on these, and the bondholders will get their interest on June and December, and I think it's June we, no, it's December, we also pay the principal as well. So this is what the $2.25 rate that is currently assessed goes to fund and, over the years, as we pay this debt off. So again, we don't have a lot to do with this particular one, we just need to be aware of, of what we need to collect in the, in the next year, and the county helps us with assessments and collection of those. The ASB fund, the bulk of these collections are from fundraising activities and concessions. Most of the money, as you can go, is, as you can see, is spent by athletics in the clubs. Had about a 15% increase. One of the things that, that we do have new is an ASB fund for Delta High School. The ESD will be, or the ESD has been acting as the fiscal agent for this, for Delta as it's been constructed. They are ready and we're ready to hand that off, we're ready to take on in Pasco the overall accounting, including the ASB fund for, for Delta. And so we, that's why we've got, we've got a few more dollars in here, we have a new ASB fund in here. Finally, the transportation vehicle fund, get about $840,000 a year in state depreciation. It was very nice a few years ago, the state used to give us, us those dollars up at the front end of the year so we could use them. They decided in one of the budget-cutting measures that they would start giving school districts their depreciation in the month of August. So we're just now getting our money for this last year. At any rate, it's about $65,000 more. The expenditures that you see there, we've got five general and two special needs buses, that's seven total. It's a different mix, but we did buy seven full buses last year. And we've got four small buses, as I understand, these are to be equipped with wheelchair lifts, and that's for the door-to-door pickups that we have for our, our special education and Ecap riders, who give us some more flexibility there. Also, we've used the vans, we had three last year, we've got four this year for the, again, more efficient to run in some of the country routes and what is, those are McKinney-Vento or some of the homeless situations that we need to provide transportation for. And then, of course, we always put one contingency bus in there, and we hope we don't have to use it, but we like to have the expenditure authority to, to buy one if we need to in the middle of the year. The ending fund balance is about 925,000. So I guess just to kind of sum up the whole thing, in the general fund, there is a substantial increase in state resources. And most of these additional funding, most of it is targeted to salaries or benefits or special programs, including CTE. There's been very little change to the non-salary items, the MSOC items, but the proposed budget does provide $2.00 million for one-time items to maintain the district's capital investments. The proposed budget is in line with the principles established over the years by the board, it does continue use of conservative estimations, it balances ongoing expenditures with ongoing revenues, it maintains that 5% of revenues in reserve, and through the use of those fund balance assignments, plans for future replacement and other cost pressures. And then finally, that last bullet, as Mr. Christensen alluded to, and Board President Lierman as well, there are some major changes ahead with the passage of the new state school funding bill, which also happened in June. So beginning in fiscal year 18, 19, as you've heard, districts are going to see a large influx of dollars, and that's from increased salary allocations for certificated administrative and classified staff. However, right in the middle of 18, 19 school year, which is January 1st of 19, the school districts will be capped at a $1.50 levy rate. And as you probably know now, that we're considerably higher than that at 427. So, you know, just if you do the math between those right now, that could be like a $16 million decrease. However, of course, the state has said, "We're going to give you more on the other side." The latest information that I have, there's a tool that OSPI put out, says that we will still come out in Pasco about $16 million to the good. So I, I say that, but, you know, there, there's a lot of questions regarding this. There's no longer a state salary schedule, for example, what does the new salary schedule look like, and how do our folks fit on it? There's the whole issue of what they call enrichment levies, what is defined as enrichment for, for what can be paid out of a levy? And even, as you heard from Mr. McNeil, will the Supreme Court even consider this whole thing a viable response to the McCleary decision? So it's still an open item, and I, I gossed to my wife about this too, but it just, it really bugs us, particularly as accountants, to just have that hanging out there. But I can tell you that we're not alone, we're not hearing any other information, and we've been monitoring that, and we've got the best, most update we can right now. And we're going to continue to do that, that's all I can say right now, and as soon as we know more, we're, we're going to be passing it along, because it will, your next decision, in a lot of ways in the fiscal end of things, will be that levy. And if, if I'm going to ask for $1.50, we kind of need to, you know, if I'm going to bring that forward, we need to understand the context of that. So anyway, it's out there, and I think I even accidentally maybe shared some of a presentation that's behind this, if you keep going a little further. It's kind of my thoughts, it's not complete yet on what we do know, so if you want to, you can certainly read that.
Is the, you said $16,000, or $16 million positive net revenues for Pasco, is what you said? Is that assuming $1.50 per thousand, the board adopts $1.50 per thousand, and what's, is it like $1,500 per student still, or did they change that?
It's 15.
Max match?
Equalization, yeah.
Okay. Those are the main assumptions in that?
Yeah, and they're putting all kinds of disclaimers on it too, but yeah.
I know that, Mr. Roberts had the same question, similar, because that's a, a big issue that we're hearing a lot in the community. So can you restate, what is our current yearly levy revenue? And you're saying based on, I know these are all, like, if it all is how we passes and the Supreme Court approves it, and we pass a $1.50 levy, assuming all that happens, which we hate to do, but the change would be a $16 million increase above what we currently receive, or we currently receive about 60 million, and it would stay right about the same?
No. So here, here's what we've got right now, for 2018, remember, these run on calendar years, so it's a little confusing right off the bat. For 2018, the board, the citizens did approve a two-year levy, this is the second year for $24.8 million. So we know we have that. If the levy the following year, yes.
Is that 24.8 in 18?
Yes, calendar year 18.
Calendar year 18. Calendar year 18.
Just one minute. If you go to slide number 31 on...
We don't have slide.
Oh.
We don't have it.
What? If you had slide 31.
I'd like to hear, this is good, this is good. So 24 million, and that, our rate is 427 is what was passed.
Right.
Roughly. And that changes a little bit based on assessed value in building, as more people, but I'm okay with estimates. We don't have to be exact, but I would like a close estimate. So, 24 million. And then based on the changes, if that all follows through as we now understand it, what would the change in that?
So here's an easy way to do it. I'm going to give you very round numbers. We're almost at $6 billion in assessed value in Pasco School District. And let's just say it's $1.50. That's $9 million. So you can take the 9 million away from the 24.8, and you can see, again, that's rough. That's the decrease that you would have.
Right. And then, but we're going to receive more from the state. And this is my main concern, that some people have been asserting in the community that we're going to be, receive over the next four to five years, an additional $80 million above and beyond what we currently have after all these changes go through. And I just don't see that. And so I'd like to have that knowledge and understanding where we can share that, based on the current plan, if it happens that this is what we currently receive, and this is what the change would be, assuming that we had $1.50 levy, assuming that the state approves what is currently planned.
I would tell you, I'd be really nervous in going that far yet, is to rebut an $80 million figure. I will work with OSPI, have their latest estimate, which came out last week, as to how this affects things, and it's a little difficult to follow, quite frankly. So I, there's still a lot of dust out there, and we need to spend a little more time on that, particularly in those out years. I just, I'm not...
Yeah, it gets a little more fuzzy.
It does.
The more you go out. But I just think we need to have some understanding or baseline to compare that to. If someone's going to claim something, you know, really dramatically different, we need to have some level of assessment or estimate, you know, that we can say, well, no, based on this, you know, because we can't just allow this dramatic difference, which causes a lot of confusion and havoc in the community, we need to have at least, okay, no, based on this, this, and this, it's probably more like this. We really need those numbers to be able to share and be transparent and counteract other claims.
Right.
So, you said, it looks like we're 16, that's 1-6, right?
Yeah.
16 million in the positive.
Yeah.
Based on your current estimate.
If I could, I would like to go back and check those numbers, because I'm doing this off the top of my head. I'm getting really nervous about this.
I'm curious to know how you're, so that's 25, right? I mean, that's, maybe that's not 25. So are levies going to go down, and are state apportionments going to go up? And the net of those is, you're estimating at something?
Yes. It was a positive number, and I can't remember if it was exactly 16. So, yeah.
Never mind that, but the...
It's supposed to cover the decrease in our loss in local revenue.
Right.
But that's all it's supposed to cover?
No, it's supposed to be more than that.
Yeah. I think the challenge, oh, sorry.
Well, I think that, so we don't know, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here. So I don't know that we can go out and refute anybody's numbers, because nobody knows. I mean, we could say that's a pure guess.
I'd like to be armed with, you know, at least, we have to, if someone, people are going to be throwing out numbers, we need, at least need to have some, something that we can say. And I think part of the confusion is, we say this 80 cent, and we have the $1.50. So we have those two, right? And you can combine that, but really, that's not what, because the state is going to allow us more, and that's where it gets fuzzy, because if you look at that, you're like, okay, then we're paying 230. So our local community will be paying significantly less levy, no matter what. But the state's going to give us a lot more money, and that's where there's a lot of disagreement. And I think that's going to be a vital estimate, figure to discuss, because that's what people want to discuss. They want to say, well, you're going to have, you know, this much extra money, you know, do something with that. You know, and so we have to have some information around that if we're going to be able to discuss our planning going forward.
Yeah, and I commit to you, I'll get it as soon as I'm comfortable in doing that. I'm just a little nervous right now about doing that.
I think the thing we need to keep in mind is, these were all based on projections, and of course, depending on what, how you wanted it to fall, your projection was...
Could be really, yeah.
...a certain way. And I think we just need to point that out. And hopefully, it's not a big number of community members who are...
Yeah, and I think another thing to point out is that that money, though, is not for facilities. That money is, will not, we know that for sure, that that is not money that can be used for facilities, period. That is part of the law. So that's something we can refute, that that money, if we get extra money for levy apportionment, it's not like we can just take that, add it to a capital facilities fund, and then go build a school. Is that accurate? Would that be accurate, an accurate statement?
I think it goes into the general fund, and then you decide how you want to use those dollars.
So we can transfer it to...
You could. I mean...
So those are the kinds of things we really have to know, and I know, again, it's changing, but we have to at least have, based on current understanding, these are the options.
My understanding was a lot different from reading, in that there was a lot of, it sounded, I mean, they're implying, and I'm reading between the lines, that there would be a lot of color of money there, and that the money they give us is going to be used for student enrichment and operations, so that we weren't as free to spend our, to spend that money, you know, as you would be with a levy. That's how I read it, that you would have to prove that you're not putting this money towards capital facilities. You can't put this money towards teacher contracts and bargaining and giving raises.
Yeah.
That you're putting this towards student enrichment and/or operations, is how I read it, but that was my interpretation.
Yeah, that's fine. Mr. Roberts, I'm happy with, a week or two, you know, we look at that, and then we, but we should all each have a good understanding, where we could easily explain this, that based on current understanding, we need to have that information.
When this is finalized, yes. It would be really nice for us to really understand this. It is iffy. I've read a lot of different things on it, and even there, iffy. So it's, it would be, we as a board need a good understanding of this, and I don't think it's out there yet until, it might not be out there till two years, and they get everything done, and all the new taxes in, and all the old taxes out, and it's going to be a process. But we need to know when we can.
Yeah, absolutely. I would like to know myself. It would help. Next step, as I mentioned, by law, the state does require us to pass a budget by August 31st. We've got time. We've got the final session there. So it's very complex. It's full of details. Jody's sitting on the sacred, or has a sacred budget book there, and it's just full of the details that go into this thing. We would be happy, as in the past, to meet with any of you individually, if you'd like to give us a call, or we'll reach out to you to talk over any of the details, if you want to dive in a little bit deeper to any of these things. I just want to give you a comfort level of understanding before the 22nd. And with that, I'd be willing to answer any other additional questions. Good questions, by the way. I wish I had answers for some of them.
You had mentioned that there's $2 million being transferred, or being used from our savings, if you will, to...
That's the priority investment, yes.
You said, I thought you said you were going to tell us what those were. Did I miss that?
No, they're prioritized investments, is what I said. And this is one of the things that, when you get crunched on a budget, we have a list that is way more than $2 million right now, and we're going to be looking at it in leadership and try to make those dollars stretch as far as we can. They are all one-time in nature. They are not salaries or something we're going to have to continue to pay for year after year.
I have one question that maybe Ms. Whitney can address. At the beginning, you talked about how the most complex part is personnel, and I know that the district's been working on allotment of personnel between schools, between elementary and secondary schools. I was just wondering if you could share maybe just some of the progress on that, as far as allocation of personnel and resources between our schools?
Sure. So I don't have the details that I can share at this point, because the buildings are not aware yet, but we are finalizing some decisions around that on Thursday's, at Thursday's budget meeting. But certainly, our goal is to have an equitable distribution of resources between, especially